All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regular meeting of the Tiger Twalton School Board. I will now call the meeting to order at 6:32 PM. All right, so first up, Dr. Ricky Smith, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none, Vice Chair.
All right, hearing that, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I move that we approve the agendas presented.
Second.
Motion was made by Director Jaime, since seconded by Director Zershied. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing then, we'll move to a coral vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. All right, and with that, we will move on to the recognition and good news with the recognizing of the TTSD Special Education Team with presenter Carol Kitch.
Good evening. Good evening, School Board. Dr. Ricky Smith. It is a true pleasure of mine to be here tonight, and Principal Koi Waffle has joined me to recognize and honor some of our elementary learning specialists this evening. They are just one of the most remarkable group of people, and you'll hear a little bit about why tonight. What I wanted to tell you, though, before I get started, is when you get hired in Tiger Twalton, which I did twenty something years ago, I was told sometimes when you come to Tiger Twalton, you never leave. And because special education is truly special here. And the people you're going to hear about tonight are people who value the things that we value in this district as much as I do. So, starting with what you know is inclusion. And it is really hard to imagine being in a school district that doesn't do what we do, which is when you enroll your child in school, you attend the neighborhood school. And ninety-nine point nine percent of our students attend their neighborhood school. And that is just a truly beautiful thing. And what you're going to hear about is some people who do all the work to make that happen every day, because it's not easy. It requires some incredible level of collaboration with general ed, with your administrators. It requires problem solving, thinking outside the box, having a really good sense of humor. You'll hear a little bit about that. And so what you're going to hear about is some people that truly make that happen here and really improve the lives of kids every day. And so it's pretty exciting for me to be here with you. Tonight, we're going to celebrate about ten of our learning specialists that have been here for at least three years. And some of them are a little closer to old timer like me and been here closer to twenty. And hopefully, they will all be here for as long as I have. So, we're going to get started. And Patty, if you could go to the first person, and that would be me. This is, and I'm going to highlight who's actually here in person, because you have real live specialist teachers here with us tonight, and two of them online. So Brooke Maury is here from Alberta Rider. And we had people, students, parents, and/or administrators and counselors, tell us a little bit about them. So we're just going to highlight one of the quotes, but I'll share all of them with you. The quote here is, "Brooke is always looking for ways to support her staff and students they serve, whether that is adjusting schedules, finding fun new ways to keep kids engaged, or helping our grade level teams at EBIS meetings. Her willingness to problem solve and stay positive is appreciated." Next one.
I just want to start by saying it is truly my privilege to recognize and acknowledge the hard work that our learning specialists do. Like Carol said, it is a demanding job. It requires not just patience and kindness and putting students first, but that sense of humor is really needed. And I just, it's a privilege to be here to recognize all of you. So, thank you. I get to recognize Natalia from Bridgeport Elementary. And it says Natalia, or Ms. P., is truly one of the most patient and caring learning specialists I have ever met. She navigates even the most stressful situations with a smile on her face and a "this is the nature of the job" attitude. One of her students, a fifth grader at Bridgeport, said, "Ms. P. is amazing. She's extraordinary. Every time I'm mad..." Oh, what's her timing? I'll start over. This is from one of your fifth graders. "Ms. P. is amazing. She's extraordinary. Every time I'm mad, she just tells me to calm down, and I do. She's really nice. She's just amazing."
Next up is Denise Murphy, who's behind me somewhere. Wait. Denise Murphy's at Byram Elementary. And goes on to say, "This magical mixture of knowledge and passion creates strong relationship, precise programming for our most vulnerable students. She works countless hours and still finds time to lead critical systems of support in our building, manage her staff, and be a valued member of our instructional leadership team." And she has some fun little quotes from kids too, but I am going to pick one that says, "All I can say is she is one of my good friends," second grader at Byram.
Next, Ms. Melissa Myers from Deer Creek Elementary, one of my personal favorites. "Melissa never shies away from the hard work and always focuses on what's best for our students. I can always depend on Melissa to be part of the solution when challenges arise. She is a champion for students and families, and it's a privilege to work alongside of her each day." Thank you.
Next up, Durham Elementary. This is Kristin Mansfield, and she's going to wave to you on the little grid up there. There. Thank you, Kristin. Oh. She's so excited on the big screen. Kristin, actually, this is my quote from the first week of school. She is actually a first year teacher. And I showed up on the first week of school, and I said, "So how does it feel to be a veteran special education teacher in Tiger Twalton?" Because she quickly took the lead, and she is here because she started as an instructional assistant. So she has been devoting her time to teach. She was at Twalton Elementary. So she has been here for more than three years and committed to our special education program as an instructional assistant and now a teacher. So my quote for her is, Kristin believes, and this is from a Durham Elementary student, "Kristen believes in me and makes me feel good. I can always get help from her, and she is nice. She smiles a lot and has a good sense of humor. She is always there for me even when I'm having a bad day. She's never going to give up on me. I love her so much."
All right, from Metzger Elementary, Kim McAdam. And this is a parent quote for you. "Kim is amazing. She brings a sense of calm and caring in a world that can often feel overwhelming and scary. Her ability to connect with kids that struggle with finding their voice is a gift. I feel beyond lucky to have Kim working with my son and will be forever grateful for her impact that she has played in his continued success." Angela Swenson.
Next up, Templeton. Unfortunately, Dylan and Caitlin couldn't be here, but you could see what Dylan's like just by looking at his picture. Dylan's quote is, "I learn something new from Dylan each day I work with him. He uses his use of sense of humor with students and staff creates a sense of trust and helps everyone let their guard down and be their best selves. And Caitlin goes above and beyond for all of our students and families. She meets everyone exactly where they're at. She is a warm demander through and through, and her students adore her."
Right, Twalton Elementary, Angela Preza. "Seeing Angela work with students both in and out of the classroom is magical. Angela's warm, friendly, and intrinsically kind demeanor means the world to everyone in our school that gets to work with her." And then McKinley Smith, also from Twalton Elementary. "She is an integral part of our sped team that is incredibly responsive to the needs of the teachers and the students in class. McKinley's talent is working with our support staff to ensure that our students receive the best support possible."
Thank you. And Mary Woodward. We have Kristin, who's smiling, because she knows I'm going to make her wave. Hi. Hi. And Jill Peer is her counterpart, who's in the picture. She's out on maternity leave, and I don't know if she's listening in, but she was going to join tonight and listen in. So for Kristin, I always appreciate Kristin's sense of humor that really lightens up hard moments, the hard moments we come across at work. She is always willing to help and be supportive. I'm grateful that she's on my team at Mary Woodward. And Jill consistently provides a calm and encouraging demeanor when working with students, staff members, and parents. Jill's sense of humor is amazing, and her ability to get her students to work hard and do their best is top notch. So you can hear the themes of a good sense of humor, calm, willingness to do hard work. These are, again, an exceptional group of people that, as you've gotten in your board updates, have been faced with more challenges than usual. So I imagine that they start each day five or six o'clock in the morning, getting text messages about who's out and which schedules they need to redo. They might be doing that behind me right now. And they have also been really important in our schools as we've had students who have moved in in general ed and special education that have increasing needs around social, emotional learning and behavior. So they have been relied on as experts in the building to support our general ed teachers and our administrators and our counselors. So as much as I value them every day, I'm extra appreciative of all the hard work they're doing right now. Thank you for honoring and recognizing them.
Can I just give everyone, everyone, give a moment of applause for these folks and our district sped team? Thank you so much. Any questions, comments from directors?
No questions, just, you know, I want to say thank you for all of your hard work. I know that when I was a teacher, I looked up to you all for help. And you all came and answered the call. And when I was building administrator, I also looked at you for help, and you answered the call. So you're an integral part of running the school building and making sure that it keeps running. And so I appreciate it, and I appreciate everything that you do for our students. Thank you.
Dr. Lynn, did you want to say anything?
Sure. I'll just say, thank you, thank you. I listened to, I was particularly moved by the responses of the students who were so appreciative of how patient you are as a collective, but also as individuals. But, and your ability to keep calm in the face of what I'm sure is often chaos. And so I'm just really impressed, and I'm grateful to you for your service to our students. Thank you.
So I'd just like to add, when you're talking about the patience and the humor and all of that that's involved in the job, one of the things that you didn't mention, which I think is also a huge part of the job, is the amount of paperwork and following the federal regulations and the attention to detail that that takes. And so I want to acknowledge that side of the work as well, because I know that's often tedious and hard, but really, really important. So thank you for doing that. And then on a personal level, I just want to say thank you, Angela. Angela was my daughter's learning specialist about twenty years ago at Byram. She, by the way, is now a payroll specialist. She is a taxpayer. She is about to move into her very own apartment. So if there's a success story for you all to look twenty years into the future, the kiddos you're working with today could be that girl twenty years from now. Thank you.
And I would just echo, of course, what, well, do any of our student reps want to have any comments, questions before I? Good? Okay. I would just echo what all of my colleagues have said, and I actually worked in the Durham sped department for a while, years and years and years and years ago. And I, there's not any, I think, more rewarding and challenging work. And it was kind of the highlight, I think, of that whole time period of my own teaching and kind of learning how to meet kids where they're at and have kids help meet me where I'm at in terms of my own teaching practice. And just, there was so much there. It was so rich. And so I just really appreciate all the work that you guys do, and it is not easy. And it's challenging, but I hope that it's rewarding and hearing what the kids had to say in terms of how much they just feel like they love you and you're there for them, and they believe that you believe in them is so powerful. So, thank you.
And then giving the high sign from Director Rose that it's time for the family picture. So if you would all please indulge us and come forward and stand here in front of the board. And we will celebrate you by taking your photo and posting it.
I'll keep, I'll keep that, I'll keep it going. As teachers wrap up their units and start handing out their tests, winter sports are kicking off the good start. And the canned and tiger leadership is doing some canned food drives and giving trees, kind of push the holiday cheer.
Okay, clubs are also on full swing. I think that the Tiger ICC is currently working on having a January winter room for students to come in and make crafts. The ball show just ended, the Games Afoot. It was probably one of the funniest things I have ever seen. All of the actors and actresses did amazingly. We have the winter jazz concert, as well as the winter orchestra band and choir concert coming up this week as well.
I'm over at Twalton. We also have our canned food drive starting, which started last week. And in one week, we were able to raise more canned than we did in last year's month-long event, which I think was pretty amazing. We're still going strong. We have a part of a week left. So, anyone that goes to Twalton, please come to the Kansas School on Tuesday. Our E Hall pass system was just implemented, which created various action in the student body, but I think teachers and students are getting a hang of it collectively. Our basketball team, swim team, and wrestling team have all started playing after winter seasons. We have a lot of events this week. We have our winter orchestra concert happening right now. We have our holiday band concert tomorrow, and our winter choir concert on Wednesday, as well as other ASP funded events throughout the week.
Fantastic. Any questions or comments for our student reps? All good? All right, so we are on to the superintendent and board communication. So, Dr. Ricky Smith.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair. And so following our student rep Nasee's lead, our buildings are busy with events and activities. The school wraps up the month of December and heads into winter break. Winter performances, sports, and activities are truly one of the highlights of the year for me personally. Tomorrow evening, we will host the second integrated guidance community meeting here at the training center. Dinner is at from five to five thirty, and the meeting will begin sharply at five thirty PM and no later than seven thirty. The last day of school for the calendar year, let me be specific about that, is a Friday, December sixteenth. And the first day of the new calendar, twenty twenty-three, is Tuesday, January third. Tonight, I also want to use this opportunity as a reminder that we all experience this time of year differently. While many of us welcome a two-week break and look forward to celebrating traditions, others face challenges that are difficult to navigate, especially during breaks when the daily support from our schools is not available. If our students and our families or someone you all know needs extra support right now, please reach out to your school office before Friday. Staff are ready with information and resources to help our students and families. In last week's too with Dr. Sue, I encouraged our families to become familiar as well with the different ways students and families can report emergency situations when school is closed, such as through Safe Org. These resources are listed in last week's, or last Friday's newsletter. I also ask that parents, please be sure to keep an eye on their students' social media as that activity tends to increase during school breaks. And it is often the first way in which we are informed of risks, whether it is about hate or bias situations or hints of self-harm, abuse, or violence. We have resources available around the clock to assist again. So please, I would encourage our families to refer to last Friday's newsletter or the district website under Fast Links. And with that, thank you.
All right, directors, anyone want to go first?
Director Zershied.
I had the privilege of watching or listening, I should say, to the Twalton High School Crimsonairs. They had a teaser choir concert at the Twalton Public Library last week. And it was really quite something. They're extraordinarily talented group of kids, as always. And just wanted to remind people that the full choir concert at Twalton High School will be on Wednesday at seven PM. And I intend to be there, and I hope everybody else does too, because they are dynamite.
I don't have anything to report other than I want to wish all of our constituents and all of our families and students happy holidays and prosperity year and make sure that we all come back safe from the holidays.
Dr. Lynn, did you have any updates?
Sure. So I'm celebrating the fact that a good friend of mine who works for an education foundation published a book called Change Agents, and it's by Justin Cohen. And the book tells the story of this foundation and how they work effectively with K-12 schools in the Bay Area. And lots of really rich lessons about what it takes to actually improve academic achievement in places where there's some real challenges. So celebrating that and happy to talk to them about coming and sharing with us if anybody's interested. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. I have, let's see. Director Zershied and I did a lunch at Twalton High School. So that was wonderful, and we had Nasee there and got to sort of kick his brain on some issues and topics. So that was great. And I attended the City of Tiger, kind of with primo espresso holiday lights walk, and I saw our student representative, Oshiki, there handing out hot chocolate. So that was a really fun community event. And it was lovely. There was no rain at that point. So that was really fun, just to see people out and about. And then one thing for the directors, I was asked by the Foundation for Tiger Twalton Schools, they're doing their gala at the end of January, and asked if the directors or the school board would like to put together a basket sort of with one of the auction items. And so if anyone is interested, I think we're contact, having people contact Patty and just let them know if they're interested, and then I'll sort of figure out how we put that together. But that was the only ask. All right, and with that, we will, oh, and Patty, I'm looking at our list and confirming that there's no public comment, correct? All right. And then with that, we will move to reports and discussion. Item A, which is Dr. Ricky Smith.
So good evening again, Vice Chair Urban and board directors. This evening, I had the pleasure of having our assessment team, Scott Burge, representing tonight as Paul Verstrade is back in the chilly Midwest visiting family. But I know that we are ably supported. So should there be any questions relative to how the data is collected or calculated, he's here to provide answers to that. So this is the first quarter report, which is part of, should be considered part of my yearly evaluation. As you know, that this is a report that we provide you with the data. Then, following my presentation this evening, you will hear from Assistant Superintendent Dr. Lisa McCall and Director of Teaching and Learning Todd Robson relative to what strategies we are using to impact this data. Next slide, please. As a reminder, there are two standards that this presentation relates to relative to my evaluation. First, having to do with the principles of equitable practice and promoting the success of every student and demonstrating visionary educational leadership. And the second, next slide, please, standard five, which addresses my role as an instructional leader within the district. Next slide, please. Overall, as a reminder, we have set a task of five percent for overall growth in proficiency, kindergarten through eighth grade in eye-ready math and literacy scores. And at ninth through twelfth grade, that five to eight, that five percent growth overall and eight percent for historically underserved has to do looking at data from ninth grade on track, credit attainment, and four-year graduation cohort rate. Next slide, please. This slide here shows you what that five and eight percent metric will look, how that will look relative to this year. So we are starting from a position of last spring where you can see in terms of eye-ready English language arts, we were at fifty-nine percent, and the five percent growth there overall would be sixty-four. And then historically underserved, we would need to move from thirty-eight percent to forty-six percent. And I should say that this evening is entirely focused to two K eight. You will receive an update relative to the nine twelve data in January, following the state graduation report. And when we get to the end of first semester, as the high schools are on semester schedule. You also see for math that we, our overall goal is to go from the spring of twenty-one, twenty-two, which was forty-eight percent, to one of fifty-three percent overall, and from twenty-eight percent to, apologize, thirty-six percent. Any questions concerning that metric? All right. The next slide, please. Thank you. This has to do with, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but this has to do with the number of individuals who were tested, both in Acadians, which is, used to be the Dibbles director, Jaime's will remember that. But we still use that K-five as a second measure, and then the eye-ready, so that you see total populations that have been tested in the fall. Next slide, please. What you see here then is this quarterly report, the one in relative to winter data and the one for spring, we will compare from fall to fall last year with this year, winter to winter, spring to spring, and then ultimately for this year, first quarter, fall to spring at the end of the school year. So you can see the growth overall. One of the ways, I'm sorry, no, one of the ways in which I encourage you to look at this data is to take a look at the light blue bar, and this is also true on the math data. So the light blue bar are the previous grade. So in this case, let's take Kinder. So you can see the light blue bar relative to students who were tested in the fall. And then how they performed, it's not a perfect cohort, but how they might have performed in first grade. The dark blue bar. So you can get a sense of the the data for Kinder, for second, third, and so forth. What you will notice, and what we noticed, is the fact that we continue to have some concerns relative to K-one. However, when you take a look at the third grade data last year, the second, who would have been second graders, you can see how they perform this year. So we are, it's clear that we have, our strategies are beginning to take, we believe, are beginning to take hold. This also has to do with students' ability to understand the test and how to take it and to provide us with greater accuracy in terms of information. Next slide, please. Here you also see relative to overall and taking a look at our underserved and historically underserved populations. So again, you can see from twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three, it is clear, and we know this, that So again, you can see from 2021, 22, and 22, 23, it is clear and we know this, that this continues um, to be an area of focus and, and critical, a critical focus. Um, and I appreciate Director Lynn's uh, conversation this evening relative to the text that is out and uh, look forward to hopefully putting my hands on a copy of that and, and seeing what new information can be gleaned. Because this, this continues to be a critical focus for us. Next slide, please. The next slide um, also shows a data analysis of our fall benchmarks on Acadians. And so you will see relative to reading comprehension that it tracks um, right along with your I-ready data. So it's a good double check that our I-ready system um, is, is being, being validated as another data point. Next slide, please. In terms of mathematics, you see the same information here. There is only one test that we use, a formative assessment that we use, and that is the I-ready. Uh, and again, you can see how many were tested out of the total number of students that we have. Next slide, relative to mathematics, you will see the same bar. What you will also see is that this is certainly an area of concern for us as a district. Um, we know that nationally, um, that math took a tremendous hit in terms of, of the impacts from the pandemic. The belief is that while the reading outcomes, both locally, state, and nationally um, are, were better than math, it is simply because it is an easier thing to reinforce at home versus math instruction. Um, that all being said, this is an area where Tiger Twolleton uh, will be putting a full bench press. Um, we, we know there are reading strategies and protocols are, are well developed. But math is, it's our next area that where that needs to happen and that, that information will be provided to you here in just a moment. When we take a look, next slide, please, Thor. When we take a look at the math, you will see again the same. Um, and uh, these are, there's a critical sense of urgency um, around addressing the, these numbers. Um, no one is, no one is A, surprised, but B, again, a great sense of urgency. Um, and we have been impressed by the way in which teachers have stepped into the space, particularly at the elementary level, into the I-ready professional development. Um, and you will hear this evening also briefly uh, about lab classrooms where those teachers who are proficient in certain um, instructional moves in mathematics and in reading are opening up their classrooms so that other practitioners can come in and learn and observe from them, along with the instructional coaches. Next slide, please. This is our attendance data. And again, no surprises here. Um, when you take a look to the far left, the darkest bar is uh, this first quarter. Uh, and we believe that um, in part, and this has been borne again, both by state and national data, that students in many cases learned unfortunate habits um, relative to not, how, how to make themselves disappear, if you will, and, and not always attend relative to the virtual platform and then carried those lessons um, into the classroom as well. So this is certainly an area of, uh, also a focus for us as to what are the ongoing antecedents that are keeping you from attending on a regular basis? We know that kindergarten, it starts there. Um, and so it is very important. We, we have many principals and I will call out one in specific who did a recent video, Principal Moore over at Templeton Elementary, where he, he brought out the big guns and Fluffy, their mascot, uh, was showing out, you know, what it good attendance looked like and how to get there. Um, and Fluffy is, is uh, about as close to a deity in that school as I can, I can think of. Um, and so our principals are giving it a full bench press in terms of the importance of being in school every day when you are well. Um, and um, the, the need for consistent attendance. Next slide, please. Also, this data here, um, and uh, is, is relative to Q1 around behavioral data. Uh, and uh, you can see particularly in the bar under bullying and harassment, 2021, we weren't together at all. And so we would not have expected that there would have been, although we did monitor online. Interestingly enough, that was not an issue. Uh, you see that in 21, 22, there was a major uptick and you can see that we are well on our way to surpassing that in 22, 23. I would put a caveat or an asterisk here with this data to say that we also see this, believe it or not, as some good news in the sense that there has been um, an intense effort on, on the part across K-12 to educate students the first week of school relative to the ESH plans. Um, how one reports, um, as well as the professional development that has been provided to teachers and continues to be provided to teachers um, by Director Un, um, relative to how one reports, um, and how one intervenes. Um, and so uh, we believe this data is probably far more accurate in terms of bullying and harassment than we would have had in previous years. Um, certainly, we are focused to continuing to bring those numbers down. But in the short term, that tells us that we are beginning to truly see and hear and report um, the level of bullying and harassment that is, that is occurring within our populations. And the last has to do with course performance for middle school. Um, and again, this is the number of students that are passing all classes um, in, in middle school. And so you can see uh, you know, the, the data there, again, not as high in 2020, uh, 22, 23 first quarter as uh, it was in uh, 2018, 19. But certainly, again, working uh, to move that, uh, continue to move that, those bars up. And that brings me to the end of my presentation. Um, and I will pause here for any questions or comments.
Did you say Director Robson's going to go into more detail?
Yes, Dr. Robson and Assistant Superintendent Dr. McCall will provide um, a, an overview of the strategies both in terms of math and, and language arts instruction.
In regards to attendance, oh, go ahead, Dr. Lynn.
Are you sure? Okay, um, just in terms of um, thinking about achievement, you know, which is a, it's a very challenging thing to figure out, right? In terms of how to really get to make the gains you want to make. Um, and then, and you've set really clear goals and I, I see that really in alignment with the strategic plan. Um, what do you think will have to happen differently in order uh, for you to, for those goals to be met this year?
Thank you, Director Lynn. Uh, and again, I'm going, I, I don't wish to be a spoiler of, of the content that is about to come. Uh, but what you will hear this evening is not only the work of that teaching and learning department is doing relative to um, the strategies that are, and the professional development that are being focused to this problem. But also from Dr. McCall relative to the Center for Educational Leadership. Because it is a, it is a one-two combination that needs to happen. Teachers need to have rich curriculum and strategies that are impactful relative, uh, as far as their instruction relative to helping students effectively learn the content, uh, as well as be able to assess what they do know and what they don't know and how to address that. Uh, but you also need to make sure that your building administrators, who are also instructional leaders, that they have the tools they need to be able to observe student learning, to be able to provide a critical feedback to teachers relative to what they observe, they see in students. Uh, and ways working collaboratively together to figure out, all right. Um, let's look at your data. Let's take a look at my data that, that I've observed in terms of the students' behaviors. And then let's see how we can continue, what things need to continue to be done or need to be done differently. Um, and who do I need to contact in teaching and learning or Dr. McCall or Carol? Um, Director Kinch relative to special ed concerns. So that there is, it's not just focused to teacher and to strategy, but it is also focused to the skill set within the administrator to be able to provide that feedback and provide the boots on the ground support necessary to ensure that the teacher has all the tools necessary.
Thank you so much. I agree that that link between teacher and, and leader is so critical and I'm glad that you're focusing on that. Because I think that is uh, oftentimes related to some of the challenges we have. Um, I've been, I've heard, you know, and, and we've been, all been through the pandemic and, and I've heard some reports that suggest that a number of kids, particularly underserved kids are significantly behind still because of the learning loss that occurred during the pandemic. And even one report was rather pessimistic and suggested that uh, some of these, some of our students may never catch up because of what they lost during uh, that period of time. Are we also experiencing that? And, and what is your thought about um, whether or not we will catch up?
Yep, thank you. Um, I think that yes, we will, we will eventually close those gaps. I think it is at, at minimum a three-year, if not a five-year endeavor. Uh, and that is the reason why in the strategic plan, uh, we have those data sets that set those goals and very clear markers. Uh, I would share with you that there is a recent report that was uh, study that was done jointly between Harvard and Stanford, uh, where they spoke exactly to that problem, Dr. Lynn, uh, which was uh, when they took a look at the level of free and reduced lunch um, across the United States. So they had a plethora of data from which to, to choose from. Um, when they, when you take a look and they developed a map and we can get you that link and I'll, I'll put it into your board report this week so that I know you as a researcher would appreciate that. Uh, but when they took a look at it, there was a very clear relationship, causal relationship between the level of um, free and reduced lunch and the outcome on the NAEP um, exam. The only outlier was in Piedmont, Alabama, which is almost 99% free and reduced lunch. And yet they have had the highest rate of, 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 of highest proficiency rate uh, at fourth and eighth grade uh, in both reading and math. And it is because there has been a long tradition there of being 110% focused to that content and working specifically understanding the needs of, of the underserved student. So I think there is a great deal uh, to be learned there. Dr. McCall actually has a contact in Piedmont. Um, and uh, so she sent forwarded the study to me and that will be some of my uh, winter break reading is uh, digging further into that and seeing what lessons can be learned. Additionally, I would share with you that I've already elevated this to the state level uh, with COSA and OSBA as part of our advocacy going into uh, the uh, the next legislative session around the state school funding. And again, showing them how much growth has got to happen, not just for all of our students, but specific to our historically underserved, to paint that very picture for them. Um, that, uh, that 9.5 uh, that is currently um, the recommendation of the Legislative Budget Office is insufficient um, in terms of the costs that we are incurring to uh, address the impacts of the pandemic um, as well as close the gaps around learning loss. One other piece I would add to that is that there was also another study that was released uh, late last week that basically said the impact of the, of the pandemic in terms of brain age. Um, there is now uh, neurobiological imaging uh, that is, that demonstrates that our, our students' brains literally aged several years. Um, they now, because brains tend to be plastic uh, when you are younger, there is a belief that with thoughtful um, social emotional uh, supports and continued focus relative to academics, that those brains, that their brains will recover. Um, however, it, it speaks to um, uh, the sense of urgency that we're all feeling relative to addressing this issue.
Thank you.
So that was one of my questions, which is a wonderful answer for. My only other question was in terms of the attendance piece, um, and kind of looking at that, taking a deeper dive, will that be kind of, will empathy interviews be a part of that? I mean, how are we kind of gathering what those barriers are, you know, to our kiddos coming to school and having those chronic?
And again, I will, I, I don't wish to be a spoiler alert. Um, but, but I think you will hear uh, some of the initial work, you know, and there was work, very intentional work that was done during the pandemic as well as last year uh, in terms of outreach. Uh, I will tell you that the addition of the, of the additional administrators um, at the middle level uh, have gone a long ways uh, to providing that, that extra level of support. But there's a tremendous amount of work yet to be done. We are, we are just in, in the early stages.
Okay. All right.
So I have a question. You, you didn't talk about it, um, but you've got data on it about the science scores. And the fact that those also took a heck of a hit um, during the pandemic, but exactly the same as we've seen across the country and across the state. But do we have any targeted strategies for addressing those science issues? Or are we just really focusing on math and reading anymore?
As you know, that we have, have a new science adoption. Um, and so I think it is in its early stages. We can certainly bring a report back to you relative to science, the, the implementation of the new science uh, curriculum uh, at a later date. Uh, that will not be part of tonight, uh, tonight's focus. The reason we focus to math and, and English Language Arts is that this is, these are the two content areas that roll up to state exam and that roll up to NAEP. Um, and that has been the, the major, a major concern um, both stateside as well as nationally. Uh, we know that in, in last week's meeting with superintendents, um, the, the governor-elect has made it very clear that her top three priorities are homelessness, healthcare, and education. Uh, and so uh, we know that the, these two content areas to begin with will be her major focus. Um, but I appreciate your question relative to science. Certainly it does not mean that we're not teaching the other subjects. It's just that because our assessment system currently is focused to those two, because it rolls up to the state exams um, that, that you are receiving that focus this evening.
Sure. That makes total sense. And because also the bulk of the, the reading and math, the scores you're giving us tonight were elementary. So obviously we're not going to have high school science.
Yeah, no, absolutely. But it, but it is critical because that is also issued by the state, uh, as is English Language acquisition.
All right. And with that, I think we can move to reports and discussion, item B. Thanks. Thank you so much. Targeted instructional actions update, 22, 23.
Good evening, Board Directors. So for um, my portion, along with Director Pop Robson, what we're going to talk, talk, share with you is targeted instructional um, strategies and give you an update on some actions. Next slide. And so you'll get a, you'll hear about some of the targeted data-driven systems alignment, particularly as it relates to math and reading uh, pre-K to 12. Also, an overview of the um, instructional delivery again for reading and math. And then you'll have an opportunity to hear about administrator training and support so that uh, we as a district will uh, support our instructional uh, leadership so that it improves and supports teacher growth. Next slide.
Right. Board, good to see everybody. Um, we're going to jump in, in, uh, I provided and updated, there's some updates to the packet, the more descriptive packet that was in the board packet. Um, and uh, so we'll reference that for sure tonight. Um, the PowerPoint really um, highlights those um, kinds of of strategies and systems work that we're doing to really uh, go after our goals for sure. So what, how you see this broken down is from a tier one standpoint, um, looking at systems alignment. Um, there are really two pieces here. There's alignment of our systems. And there's also the delivery of instruction and the practice around that. So that's how that's broken out seems. So we were referencing that descriptive packet for sure. Um, and what we're looking at here, these four really are referencing the light green section of your packet. So um, those are those light green highlighted pieces. So what you see here is um, in terms of system alignment, and we know this is necessary coming out of um, two years of some really difficult challenges and, and where we have seen some drift. And so um, making sure our, our systems are aligned is vital um, to moving forward, which the ripple effect then leads right back down to the classroom uh, when we have aligned systems. So our MTSS alignment for tier one practices across all 10 schools, uh, meaning elementary schools in this, in this particular case is an effort that is wrapped around looking at our tier one, two, and three systems. Um, and that multi-tiered systems of support uh, model. And so we've had a handful of new administrators that have come on board. And um, we did through HR, there was a lot of efforts um, on two different occasions during the summer to try to onboard folks. Um, this was not necessarily a focus then, but it is a focus now. And so And so as a team of ten, actually a team of eleven with our Luton, um, there as well, um, are gathered, uh, five times this year, very specifically aligning around those efforts around our MTSS systems. Make sure everybody is on boarded, up to speed on, on how those processes work. Um, and then from reexamining the LA priority standards K five, looking for gaps and holes in terms of best standards have shifted. Uh, making sure that even our recording tool is up to date. Um, that is work that's happening as we speak. Uh, looking for ways to engage our families through our disproportionality subcommittees that work in looking at some of our disproportionality data, um, is yielding some efforts to really look at, for example, here, how we're engaging um, our families to really truly, um, be informed and understand how our kids are being taught and, uh, how they're progressing. And then, um, in six eight, we're doing a, with our inquiry by design, uh, ELA curriculum that was adopted just prior to the pandemic, uh, we're bringing back to, uh, that effort work around scope and sequence and aligning that work that way. Next slide. And so referencing the dark green now, as you see, uh, in your detailed packet there, this is really tier-two and three targeted actions around system alignment. So there's that differentiator in that sense. Um, and what, uh, is listed here is some great work we're doing with our MTSS practices. Again, multi-tiered systems of support practices with all building literacy specialists. As a resource, it's a really powerful resource. They help drive and guide our MTSS processes. And, um, so we're doing extensive, and what's listed there is extensive training and work, again, around the systems and, um, the role they play. And we've taken that a step beyond just intervention, but really using, uh, our resource of literacy specialists to try to impact core instruction as well. So they've been really excited about that. Um, and that includes a new Eye On Data System, um, that includes data walls. And it's a, a management system that really allows us to track our students, um, check their progress through progress monitoring and really make solid, solid data-driven decisions through our MTSS processes. Um, and then if you see here too, then we've got, um, as a part of our tier-two and tier-three processes, our current intervention curriculum, it's time, it's time for us and we're looking at that as, uh, in terms of review and vetting and really, um, going back to the research and, and seeing what's out there in terms of our intervention curriculum. So that will have an impact this year on what ultimately we provide our students in that system. Um, and then that individual problem-solving process, it's a part of our MTSS, um, systems is really vital when kids are moving in toward that tier-three process and, and stage. And haven't shown, um, response to the interventions yet that have been provided. And then really getting that historical perspective, gathering that information to make sure that we've got, um, every player at the table in the know about the student needs and, and what they've been working through is really vital. So we're aligning around those. Next slide, please. And then you start to see, this is referencing, um, the kind of, kind of light yellow, uh, in the detailed description sheet. Instructional coaches I want to touch on, we've touched on this before, but this is really a big shift in our district. Mentioned this previously. Um, this is job embedded professional development. So in terms of delivering instruction of instruction, this is where the rubber meets the road in terms of consistent cycles happening in our classrooms with our instructional coaches alongside our teachers. Lab classrooms, Dr. Sue had mentioned that as a peer observation cycle, lab classrooms really are a, a, a situation where, um, you know, you discuss targeted instructional reading and math strategies, among other. But if we're, we're focusing on reading and math, the strategies would be discussed with a team of peers sitting with a teacher who is one of our teacher leaders. Our teacher leaders are folks, as Dr. Sue had mentioned, who have really stepped up and are very, very proficient in the kinds of skills that were, um, that are high leverage in terms of our reading and math. Um, classrooms and our, their peers are able to come, talk about what they're gonna see, observe that instructional move in play. And then debrief, which supports their own learning, supports the teacher as well. Um, and then they look for what can be replicated immediately in their classrooms. Uh, and then the language-rich core instruction, Elevate Ed, is something that many of our teachers are engaging in. As we look to try to scale up, this is really wrapped around our multilingual learners in terms of providing language-rich classrooms. Um, and I want to touch on letters, the science of reading. Um, this is, uh, we currently have a cohort of forty, um, staff from, with twenty-seven teachers K two. Uh, we've got literacy specialists, we've got instructional coaches that make up that team of forty. And they really are digging into, um, the training that provides them with background, depth of knowledge, tools, strategies needed to teach, um, those literacy skills to our, our youngest of, of readers, K two. Next slide, please. Um, and then, um, we have additional pieces that we're working on in terms of the instruction that are part of our program around phonics and phonological awareness. And then I want to turn it over to Dr. McCall and talk a little bit about Ignite.
So Ignite is really, it's high doses tutoring, one-on-one tutoring. And so this year, we are piloting, um, this at one of our elementary schools, Durham Elementary with sixteen students, who really it is just, it's one-on-one, five days a week for fifteen minutes. And where students are, are paired with tutors, uh, that are diverse and language in race. So they already have connections with, with adults who look like them. And so, uh, what they're focused on is decoding words so that it can help improve with reading fluency, accuracy and expression. And so this started, uh, September this year. And so as a pilot, we are, we're studying the outcomes. And we are triangulating our data with our Acadians as well as I, I Ready. And then we will continue tomorrow with the reports that we get from our Ignite folks. Um, so far, um, uh, students are making some gains. We'll know more by, uh, February after we have our I-Ready data that we're going to triangulate. So it's promising, and there's been a couple, uh, uh, articles out there about Ignite. And so we will keep you posted on what that looks like at TTSD.
Next slide, please. And just a couple of additions here in terms of some supports, um, which, which is wrapped around differentiating instruction. Um, we've got some resource called RAS, which is a way for students to really access, um, independent reading, uh, materials. Uh, or leveled text that meets their needs and teachers have access to that. And our instructional coaches work alongside our teachers to really bring that resource to life within our, with our, within our core instruction. In a literacy website, I wanted to mention that because it is a really a comprehensive resource, uh, rich uh, website that's a part of, uh, what our teachers are accessing that we've built out, uh, through T and L. Um, and especially kudos to our TOSA, K five literacy TOSA, um, Janelle Cook um, for putting that together, uh, with teams of teachers over time. And it's just a fantastic, uh, resource for teachers. Next slide, please. So referencing then the light and, or light and dark orange, essentially, uh, we've got a shift to math in terms of, uh, our math actions. Dr. Sue was talking about the real focus. This is really taking off, um, really looking at differentiated math training K five. We've reached out, talked to our schools, to our principals, to our teachers, and been getting back um, a lot of feedback around what's needed in terms of being comfortable with teaching math, upping their game in terms of teaching math. And topics include, in which we're engaged in this year, um, something that is common, becoming much more common within our school improvement plans, uh, across our elementaries, a small group math instruction. Uh, much like small group reading instruction, um, really allowing teachers to diagnose and prescribe and then, um, get in and meet the needs of, uh, uh, diverse student needs in their classrooms, uh, with that small group work. And, um, and then you can see listed there, um, a number of different, um, focus areas, including, for example, K two. We reached out, our K two teachers told us without a doubt number sense progression, that was something that they wanted, uh, some work on and support with. Um, the, from problem solving to, uh, we've got a big effort right now looking at fluency and shifting from um, um, an older version, if you will, um, a more traditional version of looking at, um, providing fluency through time tests to really a strategy-based way of, and skill-based way of, of giving kids fluency opportunities, um, to, to learn that automaticity. And so all that to be said, this is, uh, these are the topics that are really in play right now, um, that we're supporting across our district. And then finally, in the dark orange, the I-Ready assessment, uh, and my path personalized learning K eight. Um, you've heard Dr. Sue reference this, we've been talking about this as a resource over the last couple of years. Um, really, the important piece to this is when we look at I-Ready, um, one of the things that we're, we're bringing teachers to, to bring this to the table during a pandemic was, um, something that, um, I'm proud to be a part of. Um, in terms of, uh, superintendent says, let's go for this. Um, it allowed us to really, um, you know, understand what our students knew and were able to do through that particular assessment. That was an interim opportunity geared to, for our teachers and our larger systems at a district level to understand our programming was looking like, how effective, to understand, um, how students were progressing and more so even. Now we're digging into using that data to look at teacher practice and their own practices based on what they're seeing coming out of that. Um, and so, uh, when we talk about five and eight percent, we talk about really understanding, um, the needs of our students. This tool in terms of the data we're getting back and the kinds of reports we're able to generate to understand our student progression um, has been, has been vital. And we're continuing to build that out. So this year we've got, we continue to have PD wrapped around how to utilize I-Ready, what kinds of, you know, uh, reports are available in I-Ready that guide instruction and, and inform. Um, and so in your detailed sheet, you can see, um, the, the efforts there wrapped around I-Ready as a tool. And my path, that personalized learning, uh, tool that's a part of I-Ready, um, has allowed our teachers to um, start to move into a differentiated pathway for students connected to the data they're getting back from the diagnostic. Right. Next slide, please.
So for our last slide, I wanted to talk a little bit about the, um, training that our administrators are receiving this year. Particularly as it relates to instruction and leadership. Uh, and so we have partnered with the Center for Educational Leadership. And we, our leaders, meaning our administrators, pre-K to twelve has been engaged in professional development to help us understand student experiences in the classroom. And also to learn from one another. And also, uh, these trainings that have been ongoing, which has included learning walks where teachers have opened up their classrooms for us to go in and observe, uh, student learning experiences. What it does is it helps us calibrate, uh, and develop shared look fours. So that, uh, when administrators are having conversations with their educators, they're there to support and also provide a feedback loop. And this training has been valuable. Uh, it is, um, we have the leadership and then we have monthly learning walks uh, across levels and our next one will be within levels. And I just have to say that, um, as lifelong learners, just like our educators, it's important that we get this training and hone in our skills so that we know what students are experiencing and what we need to do to improve, um, practices for our students.
Last slide, questions? Questions?
So I'm curious, um, the Ignite reading program, um, is that just an additional dose of the same sort of thing that they're doing in their classrooms, but obviously one-on-one, which they can't get necessarily in their classes? Or is it more, here's a different approach to the same learning and maybe this is gonna be a good alternate way of you learning?
Just curious. It is a, in a, in a sense of double dose, but it's also more of a tier-two. It is, when we look at students who needs more support and decoding, it gives them that extra. And so, um, I was listening to one student who was saying, you know, we did some empathy interviews with students and say, tell me, how does it, how does this program help you? And one student says, well, it helps me when I'm back in my classroom and I feel good about what I'm doing and I'm learning and I'm getting better and I'm improving.
And I would just mention part of, you know, we talk about catching students up and that, that's a part of this and with our multi-tiered system of support. Um, processes, um, these students right now are, have been accessing tier-two, uh, intervention support outside of the core, uh, instructional, uh, portion of their day and, uh, specific to their needs and reading. Um, as they've been diagnosed and now this is, as Dr. McCall said, a double dose on top of that, uh, for that fifteen minutes daily. Uh, or when they do meet with their tutor, you know. With specific skills, again, with what they're showing that they need based on their, 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 their.
Yeah, I love what you said about they're having the confidence to take it back into the classroom and do it. Cause once you've broken that cycle and you can get the ball moving in the right direction, that's everything.
Yeah, and it's differentiated. So if you're observing these fifteen to sixteen students altogether, you will see that they're each working on a specific skill that's related to their rate and level.
And I would say, just to add, you know, this is part of us looking at studying the kinds of supports that we can give students that are really gonna make a difference to, in this, in this time of need where we need to get kids caught on, for sure, so.
Chair Bowman.
Can you all hear me?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Sorry, there's a bit of a delay. Uh, I also want to ask about Ignite. Uh, I read the articles, very glowing articles and good news coverage, uh, in the papers and I've talked to some folks who are excited. Um, I have two questions on this. The first, the, the articles made it seem like we identify students who could benefit from the high dose of this tutoring. But then as soon as they get to grade level, they basically cycle out and they no longer access this service. A, is that the correct conception of how the program works? Um, and I guess the follow-up is like, I guess I'm concerned that if the students are benefiting from this and they weren't hitting grade level by just being in the traditional classroom setting without additional support. Um, isn't there a factor? How do we make sure that when those students are getting reintegrated back into the classroom that they're not falling behind again, if that makes sense?
So I'll speak to the first, uh, question. So if students are, for example, they're making progress, they can, then, um, um, they're done and go back to the rec, the classroom and then, uh, we can put other students in their place who need some additional, uh, supports and, and intervention. So yes, they can, if, so to speak, if you're catching them up, then, um, they no longer need that support, then another student can take their place. Did, did that answer your question?
Yeah. Oh, go ahead. Sorry, Director Robson, go ahead.
I was just, I was gonna say, that's a great question because that transfer, when students are in, in, in intervention and their progress monitored, we look for the response to that intervention. And if they are meeting, um, their goals and they're, they're progressing and they are responding, um, at some point, yeah. We'll look to have students move up. They don't need that intervention anymore. And so, uh, but that transfer goes back to, that's the work that we're doing that we're just, as you looked at the, the delivery of instruction support, that's where our teachers then are at the ready um, to continue to progress monitor those students who come back into the classroom. Um, as they receive alongside their peers that continued, um, support in core instruction and really understand where they were deficient in their reading skills and now they're back because they're making progressions. And that's really focused on in that core instruction and progress monitor still after they come back to their classroom.
That's great. So there's a lot of fluidity, it sounds like, and all of those.
Yeah.
Chair Bowman, did you have any other questions?
Yes, and sorry for the delay. I apologize. I can tell I'm like, cutting in at the wrong moment. Um, the, the second question, and thank you for that, and I do, we just want to clarify, huge supporter of high doses tutoring. And I'm really excited that we are kind of paving the way. Um, I think there's a lot of districts who are looking to this experiment in TTSD, which is really exciting. Um, and my, my kind of secondary follow-up here is, let's say we get the data back in February and it looks really good and this is proving really effective for the students. let's say we get the data back in February and it looks really good and this is proving really effective for the students who get it. Do we have, and maybe this is a Director Moore question, do we have the capacity internally to be able to rapidly escalate our ability to offer this service to other students? Or what would the scaling up look like if this proves to be an effective intervention?
Chair Bowman, I'll answer that. This is Dr. Ricky Smith. What I would tell you is that I, I asked that when Ignite came to our attention, that this is, that Dr. Lisa go ahead and fill out an A R I process for Director Moore with our smarter school spending so that we could track that progress and answer that question. Should it, should it show promise and need to be taken to scale? I think that the early data is certainly promising, but Dr. Lisa has already presented to the working group and we're continuing to track that. So we have a firm handle on what, if the promising practice is really something that we want to take to scale. I think the biggest challenge is, is that this type of methodology also has limits in terms of this, because this is a national organization. So it has capacity limits relative to the number of highly trained tutors. And so I think that that will also be a concern as we go forward. But the short answer to your question is yes, we're tracking it and we are prepared to have a conversation about what it would take to take it to scale if that's a possibility. And again, this is the strength of our smarter school spending that Director Moore has continued to keep us firmly attached to and aware of and and paying attention to where we might then want to reallocate other resources where the strategy is not producing the results we're looking for and bring that those dollars to this strategy.
Thank you, Director. Sue. Just wanted to add that it's just one change idea in many of the targeted instructional actions that we share with you tonight.
Go ahead, Doctor.
Don't worry. Oh. Are you done, Chair?
Yeah, I was just saying, thank you. I apologize.
No, you're good. Don't worry, I won't ask too many questions today. With the, so with the scores that we just saw from Dr. Sue Ricky Smith, you know, specifically target or looking at our underserved races and ethnicities as well as our historically younger ser. Where are they intentionally reflected in this plan?
So it permeates this plan. The, and I say that in the sense that when you align systems, when you look at the systems alignment work, including, for example, the purpose around reexamining all E L A priority standards K five. We start with a guiding question, how can we ensure that T T S D students are learning the skills they need for overall success and not predictable by identity marker or circumstance? So the work goes deep into those questions around our groups of students who are furthest from justice and all students, the impact is discussed in terms of the work that's happening around alignment. But then the deeper work is making sure that that data is at the forefront of what we're, the reason that we're doing, what we're doing to align. So, you know, that includes the, from, from all eleven of our elementary principals fully understanding the M T S S systems and who that's impacted, who's sitting in our interventions? Why are they there and so on? So when you look through each of these efforts, that really is, that data is sitting in front of us first and foremost. And that's what we're talking about is the students who are standing out that predictably have shown to come up short in terms of the gaps that we're seeing and how is this gonna, these particular efforts going to impact that?
Yeah, and.
I was gonna add, and that data is just not quantitative data. So it also includes the qualitative, that is perception data. And that perception data is, what do our students say? How do we get their voice? And so I think someone mentioned it, do we do empathy interviews? Yes. So empathy interviews are a way to get the, the experience of those who are in the system and that includes students as well as families. And, you know, what are we doing? Well, how is it working for you? What could be better? As well as we think about, we have what is called, schools have a hundred percent meetings, which are targeted and looking at the data and talking about students, talking about strategies specifically for your students, your students who are further from justice or on the margin, what strategy will you implement and you study? And we talk about cycles of, you know, a lot of companies talk about P D S cycles. Well, whatever plan it is, you need to study and you need to measure. And then is it working? If not, what do we need to adjust or adopt? Whether it's high doses tutoring or another intervention. And that is the way we get to hear the voices and include strategies that's gonna target all of our students.
No, I agree one hundred percent with that and and don't get me wrong, this is a beautiful plan. I just would like to see intentionally being called out in the plan like what we're gonna do because like you just said, yes, the, you know, the cycles and all of that are something that we always think about through decision science. However, if it's not spelled out in the plan, there could potentially, you know, be a time when it could go by the wayside or not thought about, right? And so that's, that's my main concern, even though I know that, I know that, you know, our district has a, a rich history of making sure that we're looking at everything through an equity lens and that we're looking at all of our data so that we are focusing on our most margin-like students. However, when, when we look at a plan and we don't intentionally call out those, you know, historically margin-like students and underserved and we see the data in front of us and there's the only thing that I see for our E L Ls or our multilingual learners, I'm sorry, is this language-rich core instruction that is a professional development and that's the only intervention or targeted intervention that I see on here for for that population. It just makes me kind of scared that there's, even though I know that there's an intentional focus, but it just makes me feel like there might not be that focus and, and it gives the perception that there might not be that focus, right? I mean, it's, I know, but that's.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that feedback.
And I would, I would say that, you know, the Elevate Ed really calls out multilingual learners for sure in terms of the supports and the, the skill sets that teachers need to have to make sure that there's language acquisition happening in, in all that they do and and, but when you look at our instructional approaches and our, our labs, that really intentional practice around instruction, all of the kinds of strategies, I hear what you're saying in terms of not seeing necessarily a, something called out, but it is the work that then permeates the, the, the training and the the observation and feedback with our teachers. It's really wrapping around different student needs and, and, and looking at our data in particular to make sure that we are doing things like even small group instruction that allows for that differentiation in the classroom at high levels. And, and teachers then being able to meet the needs of, of the individual students in the classroom.
Or that intentional focus on English language development instruction, right?
Absolutely.
Do we have a lab classroom where teachers can learn how to scaffold language? So that they give access to the content for their multilingual learners within.
Exactly. And that, and that's what's the beauty of the lab classroom idea. I'm a parent door policy, teacher leaders who are really well schooled in even coming out of the Elevate Ed training and that language-rich classroom are able to have peers come through the classroom and see those strategies in play. Not to mention the efforts that we have, it's not listed here in terms of co-teaching, where we've got such amazing support with our general teacher and E L specialists who are working hand in hand to deliver instruction. That was, so, yeah, there's a lot, yeah.
Director Lynn, did you have any questions or comments?
No, thank you.
I had one comment and one question. So the comment was, it's exciting because I believe that the, the Durham is using some of the F T T S money, one of the school grants to help expand that Ignite program. So it's really neat to see those dollars at work and doing really good work and potentially work that could be then expanded even beyond that. So that's exciting. My question was, I mean, it talked about the some of the, the administrative kind of professional development. And I'm wondering in terms of teacher, kind of one level past that, you know, there's a lot of new ways to use programs that they've, that teachers have already used and some new programs and some new ways of looking at data and just wondering and sort of how they are being kind of wrapped around in terms of the professional development piece for them in order to best and most efficiently and effectively use the programs and the data to continue that instruction.
For adminis, like administrators?
Well, almost, well, it talked about that, but almost now at the teacher level. So how is that kind of not really trickling down, but really how are teachers being empowered to best effectively and efficiently use all of these new things?
Yeah, well, this, the, the beauty of this is, this is not like a this year plan. These are things that we continue, we want to replicate, we want to continue to support our teachers with. So, you know, from lab classrooms to instructional coaches are fairly new, but you know, from the kinds of resources that were included, even our M T S S systems, we, you know, are really working to ensure and building in through any avenue of P D that we can find through the calendar, but that's where instructional coaches come in. That's where our literacy specialists come in, we're working with our I As, we're working then in the core class and with core teachers as well around those systems. And on a, what we are really are working towards is that continual boots on the ground, consistent, you know, support and that, that marriage between the resource and our literacy specialists, our instructional coaches, our teacher leaders and the everyday teaching that happens in the school. So, so there's that. And then there's that continue what our, our task is to do at T N L is. And it can be a challenge, but our task is to find time to try to make sure that we, so, so take the lab classroom, take instructional coaches, that's a huge shift in our district that we're really excited about because that is the everyday cycles. That's the things that are happening in real time. And then when you look at our calendar, we've got five planning days on the calendar and the, the, the teachers really need, need time, they need time. What we have committed to, and again, thanks to Dr. Sue for that push as well to, to go for it is, you know, we are providing a menu through our, not only T N L, but through our Student Services Department and our Equity Inclusion Department, a menu of P D options that's pretty extensive on those planning days. And teachers then are in a position where they can take part of their day and do some planning very specifically and also kind of some really outstanding options for P D that are focused around the work that we're talking about here and other. And so, and including, I guess, the, the different kinds of learners that were, were, were charged with making sure that we really give what's needed, those kinds of, of P D options also part of that menu as well. The interesting part is it puts folks in a quandary, you know, they have to choose. You've got this planning day where you can really dig in with colleagues in one sense, but then you've got this amazing menu. And we're, we, we really are pushing to maintain that through those five days and give our teachers the opportunity to make that choice. Yeah.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments?
I have a question. One of the things that really concerned me in Dr. Sue's report was the percent of practically absent students. And I'm just wondering, how is that data being influenced with this? With this report, because it's not explicitly highlighted, is it, is it not? Is that not, because I know it's supposed to work on the instructional aspect of it, but how does, you know, if fifty percent of students aren't there at the high school level, how can this work be impactful?
Yeah, you're doing the math on, thank you. Yes, that's a, that is a concern. And so although attendance isn't a, a part of this particular report here focusing on and E L A English Language Arts Reading, it is a big piece of what we're doing, not only centrally, but with our principals for sure around how, what is, you know, what, what is the problem coming out of our pandemic and, and, and how do we, what are we seeing happening with our students and why are they not coming back to the extent that we need? And then what kind of systems can be in place to really support that? So that work is happening, it just has, it's not.
You think about the collaborative work also of our equity teams along with our family partnership avid kids where they, as a team, you think, and the school leadership team, they, they're looking at this. So this is again, part of that data set that they are examining and some leadership teams are focusing on, okay, for this set of group of students, we need to focus on attendance. And it's a correlation, we know, with outcome, when we know that students are not here, they're not able to get the instruction. So again, it is part of that leadership collaborative effort at, on a school level, which includes more than just administrator and the classroom teacher.
That's a great question. Are she, yeah?
So one of the things that I looked at for the math, especially for middle school math, is how rigorous it is. And it kind of reminded me of like actual high school math classes. When I was in middle school, we had a program where if you're in advanced math, you would be able to receive high school credit, but I think midway through a, my eighth grade year, we stopped it. Is there a way to get that back? Because I knew that was a huge thing to encourage a lot of middle school students to like try harder or at least have that option on the table for any middle school students.
Well, we, we did a deep dive into that. You mentioned the year, but you remember that that happened. One of the things that from a policy standpoint, prior to changing that, that a math credit at the middle school wasn't elective credit. It was not one of the core credits that you needed to have. You didn't have the three math credits in high school, you still wouldn't need to take those three, take three credits. There was an aspect for sure, I agree with you, for some students, it was a, it was a motivator in one sense, but what we, what our board policy really and our board has made clear is opportunities for students to learn need to be there at the rate that they need to learn. And so the opportunity for advanced classes is still there, that elective credit piece is the thing that went away. And we, we, based on the fact that you still, we, kids still needed to get their credits at the high school level. We weren't seeing kids swaying from taking advanced classes if that credit, that elective credit wasn't there because they were taking those advanced classes based on their need and, and their readiness to advance. And so that has continued. From the time that we've switched, we have seen no drop off in terms of kids and their motivation to, to move into an advanced class in the middle school, not getting that elective credit really hasn't done, hasn't swayed kids from, from going, I don't want to do that. So, but it's a good question. It's something that we, we had to take a look at developmentally too. We were saying some things that were coming up, of course, in terms of middle school kids trying to go after credits and, and being in that position. And we've seen a system that really has continued to support students based on their needs and accessing advanced classes as needed and having the ability to do so. And that's what the board has really supported through and through.
Well, that was wonderful. Thank you for that presentation and the packet that you gave us that is a lot of information, which is wonderful. So thank you, Dr. McCall. Thank you, Director Robson. And with that, we will move to reports and discussion, item C, Director Ebert. First reading of some board policies.
All right. Good evening, everyone. We have the last batch of first reads from the September update from OSBA. So the second reads in January that you'll see from these first reads will also have a couple of ARs attached to them as an FYI. So just heads up on that. All right. So we will get started. So first one this evening is IGBB. And you can see the first three are all around talented and gifted program and our services. There was a rule change and IGBB and IGBBC have been merged. So you'll see that IGBBC is deleted. And so the first one IGBB is a combination of both of those. So there's a lot of changes there. You can see in the gray. Any questions on that one? And then the second one is also the result of some rule changes. These are required policies. This is around identification. Sensing no questions? Okay. And then the delete one is easy. All right, IGBHE, expanded options programs. This is a highly recommended policy that we already have in place. So revisions how to modify the language used in policy. There's just a few changes. And a reminder that every, anytime you see the two, the asterisks at the top, that denotes parents as legal guardians in the policy. One asterisk is a connection to contract language. Any questions here? IGDJ, interscholastic activities. We did have, this was an optional policy and is now required. So we're adding the language and the revisions. And I double checked the update newsletter from OSBA. IGDJ is now designated as required and recommended language for the required portion of the policy is included. And this is due to changes in OAR 581022. So it's now part of division 22. So this is, I mean, an important policy.
I have a question on this one. So the district and schools may only be members of and pay fees to voluntary organizations that meet certain requirements. Do we have a process for auditing an organization's adherence to these requirements prior to, because there's some internal control where we'll because I think this is new, right? We, we haven't done that before, like reviewed, I don't know. Like, does Future Farmers of America have an equity policy? Does Oregon Association of Student Councils like? So I'm kind of curious how we'll process that internally or if we had thought about that yet.
Yeah. Could anybody in cabinet answer that question for us? If not, we need to think about that. Yeah.
And hopefully OSBA could like provide a list. Maybe that's something we should advocate for. So not every school district is doing the same sort of review, but if we're going to call it out in our policy, something to think about.
We can ask OSBA when we send these in.
That'd be great.
Any questions about the actual language? All right, IKF, graduation requirements. And changes here come from Senate Bill 1522. This is a conditionally required policy for us. And I will remind you that our IKF has not only a district diploma requirement, but then the regular diploma and so on. So that district diploma language is additional language that we have in our policy that you won't see in the model policy. Not a lot of changes. All right. JEA compulsory attendance. Couple Senate bills that created changes here.
So I have one question here. There's a sentence that I think got garbled in the in the OSBA update. And I'm not quite sure what's happened. It's in the second paragraph, that first grade sentence that starts persons having legal control of a student. And then the descriptor, who is five years old and has enrolled the student in a public school. I'm pretty sure this child, the, the student has not enrolled the student in the public school, but that's the way it reads right now.
Okay.
So I think it's probably supposed to be persons having legal control of a student who is five years of age and has been enrolled in a public school or something like that. Is what it needs to be.
And cross off student.
And cross off, yeah, yeah. And add in a, like has been enrolled in a public school.
Got it. Good catch. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. And then last one is admission of exchange students. And this change in language, this is a highly recommended policy, but these bullets regarding additional guidelines that we have added come from feedback from our high schools. So you'll see the, the bulleted items here. That will make it much easier to make a successful process for the students who are enrolling. Yeah. Any questions? Okay. Well, we'll be done just in time for the January. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Director Ebert. And with that, I think we should take a five minute recess. It's at 8:10. So we will take a recess until 8:15.
We like, cool. All right. I will reconvene our meeting at 8:16 PM. And thank you to Vice Chair Urban for so able navigating the beginning part and my apologies for my tardiness this evening. So we'll pick it back up with action items. Item A, consideration for board to hear appeal for complaint. So I want to remind our colleagues that this is protected information. So we won't be discussing the merits of it, but in order for us to hear an appeal, we have to vote in public session. OSBA has clarified that the board chair and vice chair do not, cannot unilaterally make that decision on behalf of the board. So we have to vote this evening on if we want to hear the appeal based on the information that you all have read individually. Any questions on process or procedure there before we move to vote? Okay, then I would entertain a motion.
I move that the Tiger Walton School District Board of Education will further consider a request to appeal superintendent's decision regarding complaint.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Motion was made by Director Zershmead and seconded by Vice Chair Urban. Is there any discussion on the motion? Basically, this motion just means that we will hear, we will have a executive session hearing.
So can I assume that then we'll be having this sort of a vote anytime an appeal comes up in the future? So new procedure to get used to.
Yep. All right. Then with that, we'll move to a call vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Perfect. All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. All right, we'll move to action item B. Metro Policy Advisory Committee nominations. We all, I think, received emails over the last few months requesting nominees for these positions and seeing if we were interested. It looks like they found some candidates from our neighboring districts. Is there any, are there any questions on this item? And if not, I would entertain a motion.
I move that the Tiger Walton School District Board of Directors approve the nomination of Susan Greenberg, Beaverton School District to serve in the MPAC member position representing school boards in the region and approve the nomination of Mark Watson, Hillsford School District to serve as the alternate on the MPAC representing school boards in the region as presented.
My second.
Motion was made by Director Himes and seconded by Director Zershmead. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Just, I'm glad to see other districts stepping up. This was the position actually that Darren Emerson sat on for a number of years. So it's nice to see some of the other districts getting involved.
That's cool. All right. Then with that, I'll move to a call vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. We'll move to our final action item of the evening, action item of the evening. This was explained at the last board meeting, but I am stepping down from chair effective immediately after this vote. And so the way this will work this evening is we are going to hold nominations for chair. And then if our vice chair is nominated and then subsequently elected, there will be a vacancy in the vice chair position, at which point we will fill that through the same method. If someone else is elected chair, we will not fill, there will be no vacancy in the vice chair and Vice Chair Urban will make. Set everyone clear on process and that sounds right to everyone? Okay. Then with that, I would open the floor for nominations for board chair.
I move to nominate Vice Chair Urban for chair of the school board.
Excellent. Vice Chair Urban, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Are there any other nominations? All right. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move to confirm Tristan Urban as to the position of chair.
A second. Motion was made by Director Zershmead and seconded by Director Himes. Is there any discussion on the motion? I will just say I have full confidence in Vice Chair Urban. I think he'll be an excellent chair and I appreciate you stepping up, even knowing the time commitment, your willingness to step into the role is appreciated. So thank you.
And she had an excellent test run earlier this evening.
Yes, she did. She's had a couple of. Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna do excellent. You're gonna be great. With that, we'll move to a call vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Do you want to run the vice chair election or you want me to? Okay, well, my last hurrah. So we'll do the same process. I'll open the floor for nominations for vice chair. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Director Himes for vice chair.
I nominate Director Hymas for vice chair.
Director Hymas, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Are there any other nominations? All right, hearing none. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, we will move to a. Oh. Oh, we need a motion. You're correct. Uh, I would, who's nominated, you accepted. Yes, we need a motion to confirm Director Hymas to the position of vice chair.
I move to confirm to the, to the position of vice chair. And might I just say that I believe you would be the first Latino vice chair or chair in the history of TTSD.
Awesome. Making history. Uh, is there a second?
I second.
Motion was made by Director Zershmeed, seconded by, uh, Chair Urban. Uh, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll move to a call vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. Congratulations to the new leadership team of the Tiger Twelton School Board. Please join me in congratulating them. And Patty confirming we have no public comment this evening. Then with that, we will adjourn this evening's meeting at eight twenty-three PM. Thanks, everyone.